Following that one up there, it must be good. All right, um, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, the few that are here. Um, if you'll give me a moment of silence, we'll start this. Yeah. I will now open the Estacada City Council meeting to order. Um, if you'll please join me on the Pledge of Allegiance.
Alright.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever.
Can I have roll call please, city?
Councillor Hughes, here.
Councillor McElroy.
Here.
Councillor Metcalf.
Here.
Councillor Prokop.
Here.
Councillor Strobel.
Here.
Councillor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Drinkling.
Here, thank you very much for that. Uh, we are at the first citizen and community group comment. I have two today. Thomas, you're up to bat first.
Okay. It's with a heavy heart that I come before you all today. I've talked at length about community safety and the need for their community to come together to protect everybody. But we need to talk about McKenna Davidson. Ooh. I didn't know, but I would have because she is the best friend to a sister of a young man who will be my great grandson or my grandson-in-law in June. And preparing for this tonight, I was I was raging. But somebody, a friend, Tanya Strifel, brought me back down to earth and gave me some good advice. I believe we have a D E I C in this town that I think could do some good if they would address publicly somehow to get the message out to anybody and everybody that this poison is everywhere. And it takes every citizen of this country, not just this town, this country, to say enough is enough. It needs to be stopped. It needs to go away. Votes matter. Everybody has to dig deep within their heart and call those who are in control to control. So please, please take this very seriously. It has now hit home. And this is so close. This is like half a dozen that have been close to me in the last six months. And I'm just my my heart is broken.
Thank you, Thomas. That was very heartfelt. And just so you know, I think this is something we really need to look at. I understand where you're coming from. It's all over the news. It's happening everywhere. And it's gotten really serious. So, you know, I think as a city, we're looking at that. Um, and this is something that I think we should put very strong importance in front of. And we appreciate you bringing that forward. Okay, next I have Shirley Burke.
Hey, I know most of you, I don't know if you knew who Chris Nelson was. Okay. With the Wade Creek Dog Park, we'd like to propose that, um, uh, that, uh, we name it the Chris Nelson Memorial Dog Park. Chris worked and started Estacada Rescue for pup, for dogs and cats. And she worked until the day she died. She also was mayor of Estacada at one time. So, but, uh, I think we really need to think about doing this because I know most people want to do this. In fact, my daughter has, um, going to work with the art back people trying to do a mural of Chris's honor or two. So I'd really like you guys to consider doing the memorial. Dog Park Chris Nelson, just like we did Fred Campanella. When we, I mean, I fought for that one too, because he did a lot for Estacada at the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Yeah, there's new rule. You have to bring something positive now, okay? I get you. I get you. All right, that's all that I have in front of me for, uh, community comment. Uh, so I will move on to the consent agenda. All your councillors have had a chance to read. Is there anything you'd like to move?
Can we? Sorry, um, could we pull an item, please? Uh, it would be the Resolution 2024 dash zero zero two. Um, just to have a discussion about we were, um, about businesses using the facility.
Okay, so we'll pull that down to council business and we'll add that into the bottom there. All right, that aside. Um, everything else, everybody is happy with? I'm seeing around the board, okay, so somebody give me a motion excluding that item that we moved to council business.
Move to approve the consent agenda minus the one portion, Resolution two zero two four dash zero zero two.
Second.
You have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, we are at department and committee reports. I will start off with you, Jerry. Do you have anything you might add this week?
Uh, yeah, both of my, um, committees met, uh, Arts Commission, um, they sorry, I was a little cloudy. I've been, I was on meds during that, so I'm just trying to remember it all. Um, they, uh, um, elected a new, or they elected the, uh, I guess they kept their chair and elected a vice chair. Um, Jesse Kerr is the chair and then, um, did they elect the vice chair? Well, they elected a chair and a vice chair. Um, downtown Estacada Commission also elected a chair. Uh, Shirley, Sherry Fox Haynes was elected the chair and Connie Redmond as vice chair. So they just talked about what they're gonna, what their plans are for the next year and, uh, did the committee one-on-one with Elena and um, that's about it.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, John?
I got an email from, uh, Chair Moriarty with the Traffic and Public Safety, just kind of highlighting a tentative budget for what he's trying to do. I wasn't present, uh, McCelroy, Councillor McCelroy was there for that more than, he was there in my stead this last time, but, uh, essentially they've just highlighted some critical path. I think, uh, I heard Melanie and Dawn are actually gonna attend the next one to help gain clarity and get on the same page with them so that we could start to execute on some of their goals, so.
Great. Charlie?
I have nothing.
Good.
Uh, well, DEI met, um, elected their, um, same chair, um, and vice chair, I believe. Um, they just went over goals for the year and set some timelines because they really want to get some stuff done.
Okay, great.
Sat in on the Traffic and Public Safety Committee meeting. Um, they also, uh, elected their Chair John Dozal as the new, uh, Chair and then Kerry Dobbs is the new Vice Chair. And they reviewed some of their 2024, 2025 priorities list. I don't want to go into too much detail. Are they gonna be coming and presenting that list too? I'll just hit the highlights of it or?
Uh, probably so.
Yeah, so, yeah. They, they have a major focus of student safety, um, prioritized, they prioritized roads for improvements. Um, they listed out several traffic studies that they want to conduct over the next year. Um, they're interested in doing a lighting audit to see if there's any weak spots in public lighting for, for safety issues. Um, addressed a few ADA, ADA ramps that they'd like to see go in at second and frontage. Um, wanted to take a look at the possibility of widening the road by the ball fields and the bus barn to make it safer for kids when they're coming. It's so narrow in there. If you come through there at any kind of speed, a kid can pop out from behind a car at any point. Um, they recommended, uh, wanted to see if they can get the fire department to sit in on, uh, quarterly meetings just once every few months to get feedback from them and be able to provide feedback to them. Um, and then discuss for a little bit about guardrails with, uh, different types of guardrails and they're leaning towards a cable guardrail at the intersection of Cascadia Ridge and Cemetery where cars have been going off in the ice. And then another one at Rockwell and Cemetery. And Fourth and Ginseng by Oakview. And then someone presented the idea for the, uh, child, for the National Night Out, uh, possibility of maybe getting the fingerprint kids or fingerprint kits for small children so that if ever anything happened to them, so you had some documented fingerprints to be able to track them. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, that's all I have there. So city managers report.
Okay, thank you. I have a
Paul, that's right, I forgot it's up there. I'm not used to having them up on the screen.
Well, just, just real quick, I did meet with the library board, um, couple, couple months ago, they had a large turnover of people, uh, Big Exodus, some longtime really great employees and, uh, Michelle's done a good job getting people hired in over there. So they've got some, I would call them superstars coming in, uh, hitting the ground running, a lot of activities going on. We're gonna see Ramona, the library van, out and about more now. They've got plans in place to get that uh, underway. And then with all the extra people that they've got, they are now able, fully staffed up and able to get Sunday hours going again for the first time since 2020. So looking forward to that. And then Connie Redmond will be coming off the boards, the library board as a maximum amount of term that people can serve and she's maxed that out. So we thank Connie for her many years on the library board.
Okay, thanks, Paul. All right.
Okay, I do have a little PowerPoint to keep me on track tonight.
Good.
Um, all right, so for tonight, I just wanted to share, first of all, some really great news. Uh, if you're tracking with what's going on at the federal level, you may have already heard about this, but, um, some federal funds were awarded for our wastewater facility here in Estacada. Uh, $2 million was included in the federal funding package that was passed in March. And the city applied for those funds back in March 2023, so just over a year ago. We appreciate the work that Senator Merkley and Senator Wyden and their staff did on our behalf to get this approved. And, um, it's going to go, um, a long ways towards our plant. And, um, so I'm excited to add, to do that. And the next, I wanted to just kind of give you a summary of what, what funding we've been able to acquire so far. If you notice at the bottom, it shows our, our estimated cost at this time is $42 million. That's just an estimate because we don't, we aren't at 100% engineering yet. But we have received $2.4 million in state funding. So thank you to everybody who, um, worked on that with us. And $2 million in federal funding. We had 800, about $800,000 in ARPA funds that the council set aside a couple of years ago to go towards the wastewater facility. And then we'll, um, our loan from DEQ includes $2 million in forgivable, a forgivable portion, so basically a grant. Um, so that totals up to $7.2 million and, and I didn't include system development charges because we will uh, likely include some of those as well, but I don't have a solid number on that, so I didn't add that in yet. But $7.2 million, um, I also want to give a shout out to Elena because she is the one who knew how to, um, get our foot in the door with these applications and she testified, um, down in Salem. And I know that, um, the mayor also testified down there at one point, um, to help. And I, I don't know if anybody else went to Salem, but all of the interaction that you've had with our senator and representative in Salem and then also federally, we appreciate that. And that is, uh, very exciting. We have a press release ready to go, so we'll be sending that to the paper. We wanted to announce it first here. And then next, I'm going to give a couple of project updates. Our Hillway Extension, um, is planned for the summer. The in-water work, because you can tell there it crosses, um, a couple of times, it crosses the waterway that runs through there. Um, it may begin July 15th and we're anticipating that our permits from the state and, uh, federal level will be issued by July 1. Fingers crossed on that. Um, and then we're putting it out to bid on May 14th, so about a month out. Um, put that project out to bid. That will help provide a, a way out. I know it's going to put a little more traffic through Campanella. So we'll include, um, in that project, some traffic calming elements. Uh, but it will help with the traffic that all, at this point, goes past the schools. Um, next slide, our high-level water reservoir. This is not a picture of that. This is our, um, two, two of our water reservoirs, they're half a million gallons each. But we, right now for our high-level, uh, reservoir, we're at the, uh, county for the, going through their land use process and a permit through the county because it's outside of our urban growth boundary. Uh, we're planning to put it out for bid in June and then they can start ordering. Uh, once that is awarded, they'll be able to start ordering the structure that they need to build. Uh, we'll do planning for construction beginning in 2025, so we're gonna have to make it through this summer again without this additional um, water reservoir, which is for redundancy to our northern part of town and the higher elevations, uh, but also for additional storage. Uh, we are looking into an option to construct a million gallon tank rather than half a million gallon. Um, that was one thing is that, uh, Kurt MacLeod was discussing with me. He said, we're already we're already, uh, you know, building half a million gallon. These are, both of these are half a million gallon tanks. Um, and so he wanted to price out what it would cost to just upsize to a million gallons. Um, just while we're already building it.
What, what size are the tanks just up past my house?
Those are half a million gallon tanks.
Also?
Yep, that's a picture of them, actually.
Oh, is it?
Yep, just from the other angle. Um, and we, uh, Karen MacLeod is updating the project costs to coordinate uh, with the Safe Drinking Water State Revolving Fund to make sure that we have adequate funding. And then we'll determine, uh, you know, if we can, if we need to build a half a million gallon or a million gallon, but we're moving forward with that. And then next slide, I wanted to let you know that our, um, the proposals for an economic development contractor were due today. And we received two, last I knew, is that what, so we've received two proposals for that. Uh, tomorrow, the review team will be scoring those proposals and then we'll work on a contract and bring that back to you at your next meeting. Um, the primary responsibilities of this person who will be on contract will be to manage the Economic Development Commission and facilitate public involvement on urban renewal or economic development. We also had an element in that proposal where, or request for proposals where they can, uh, assist us with project management if need be, because we do have a lot of projects going. Um, and then eventually, you know, we'll determine whether we need to bring someone on staff permanently or how, you know, how the contract is working for us once we get, get rolling, but that is moving forward. Any questions?
Right. Is the two-month time period, I know that they were planning on do the Hillway Extension last summer, I believe. And the in-water permit was what helped things up. Is, are we further along? Is it the same permit application from last year that's coming through this year or did they have to resubmit?
I cannot remember if they resubmitted it. I do not remember if it was resubmittal, but it's the same, it's the same premise. And so they, um, I don't have my email pulled up right now, but the Army Corps of Engineer did receive it and has acknowledged it. If for some reason, like when we started Wade Creek Park, um, that water, that in-water work permit from Army Corps, um, they didn't get us to us like the beginning of August, um, which then they also allowed us to do a slight extension, like a month extension on it. So I don't anticipate it being a problem. I think they, they are, we're never say never, but I anticipate it to come through, um, at the beginning of July and we'll be ready to start. But it depends, the reason they didn't get it to us before is they said they were just short-staffed and, um, and I'm not sure. I can follow up. I'll follow up on this.
Couple of follow-ups on that is, did we submit for the, if we had to resubmit for the permit, did we submit it earlier than we did the previous year? And then just take a look, is the two months, um, expected to be long enough to for the RFP to go out? And then be able to begin work in July. That's gonna be a quick enough turnaround time. So it seems like it's about six weeks.
It'll be, I think they usually put it out for about a month until the, we look at the bids, the bid deadline. And then, um, we only have to get through the, the in-water part only entails putting in like the, um, base of the, the bridge that will, or a culvert that will go over those. So everything else can get built after that. We just have to get the foundations in the water area. So we'll have enough time and I, and the, um, yes, the two months will be enough time for, for the bid and getting a contractor on board.
Great.
And I will follow up on the process for the, um, Army Corps permit.
And if for some reason that permit doesn't come through, that there's not a penalty for us to be able to not for that company that we select to not be able to do the work if one of the permits holds it, especially if we knew there was a problem last year. I just hate to see that come up again and then cost us money.
Okay, I'll double check on that. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay.
And I just want to add something before we go any further. Um, I want to thank you guys personally for going forward on the wastewater treatment and as far as pulling in that money. That's exceptional to start this project on that note. And, uh, you do a wonderful job and we appreciate you. And if there's anything council can do on testifying or anything for going further, just let us know. I'm sure we'll all be on board for that. So thank you.
I'll be calling on you next year.
All right, all right. Okay, moving forward, we're at the public hearing time, so we will go into a public hearing. Let me see, that's the first one, right? Okay. I will now read something for the public hearing, uh, on subdivision 2023, oh six S, Northbrook modification. Uh, do any of the member, uh, council members wish to abstain or declare ex parte contact? Not seeing any hands. The council now hear a staff report on the proposal, so go ahead.
All right, can you hear me? Yep. All right, great. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councillors. Um, I'm going to present planning commission's recommendation for the Northbrook subdivision modification file number 2023 zero six dash S. All right, so the applicant is Scott Clayton of Cedar Ridge Homes and, um, the consultant does all county surveys. I have a question, are the, is a, are representatives from the applicant team in the audience tonight? Just in case you have questions.
Yep.
All right, okay, great.
And online, yeah.
And online, okay, great. I didn't see, okay. And so just a little bit about the project background, um, the Northbrook subdivision was approved in December of 2021, so just about two and a half years ago. Um, but in, in the meantime, an environmental study was conducted and one pretty sizable wetland was identified, just over two acres. And due to the wetlands location, um, the layout required major, major, um, redesign. So that's why we're here tonight. All right, so just in a nutshell, um, the number of lots has decreased by 26, so the original approval had 118 lots, it's been decreased to 92. Instead of being developed in a single phase, they're proposing to develop in three phases. Um, the number of tracts has increased from three to five, so they added a, uh, stormwater tract and one resource protection tract. Um, the number of streets has been decreased and the number of connections with Deuce Road was also decreased from five to three. And two flag lots were added to the project and I'll go into more detail on those soon. Okay, so here's the subject site. It's the aerial shot, of course. Um, so you can see it's, the whole site is southeast of the intersection of Deuce and Eagle Creek Roads. Um, and it's largely undeveloped as of now. And switching to our call plan map. Um, yeah, you can see it's on the north border of the urban growth boundary. It's not far from the highway and other recent subdivision approvals. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. Um, yeah, the subject site is composed of two tax lots. You can see that little, that thin gray line down the, down the center there. And they're both zone North City Residential. Okay, and here is the revised preliminary plan. So you can see the phases, phase one, two, and three going, going from left to right. Um, and then then the new, there's a newly identified wetlands there. It's in, in green right here. And see, yes, a little bit more. Um, yeah, so here's the, um, the blue is the original plan. So the blue lines are, um, the original lots. Um, it's not the easiest thing to read, but you can see that the biggest changes occur in the, in that middle area there. Several lots from the original approved plan have been removed. Um, and they've been replaced with two stormwater tracks here, track C and E. And then the resource protection tract, which is basically taking care of the, the wetlands area there. Um, also the two connections to Deuce Road, these are the two that have been removed. And, um, yeah, along with several sections of the, um, internal street network there. However, the four connections to the south, so to the approved, um, Coyote Ridge development there, those have been preserved. And I'm gonna just go over what the tracts, where they are and, and what they comprise. So there's a future development tract. Um, basically that's, um, it's similar to the original tract that was, um, approved. It's just slightly smaller. And that is reserved for future multifamily development as is allowed within 200 feet of Eagle Creek Road in the, in North City Residential Zone. We also have three stormwater tracks now. Uh, there were only two before. And two resource protection tracks. So the tract on the far left, this kind of long strip here, that was included in the original approval, but the new resource protection tract is this tract D, that again covers the, um, the new newly discovered wetlands. And here are the two flag lots. Um, each shares a driveway with a parcel to the west, so you have 78 and 79 sharing a driveway and then 73 and 72 sharing a driveway. Um, both of the flag lots meet city requirements for minimum frontage on Northeast Shasta Drive. And that pretty much sums up the modification proposal. And so here is, um, oh, I should have put this should be planning commission's recommendation to city council. It's the same as staff's recommendation to planning commission, so staff, or sorry, planning commission finds that the proposal is modified, Northbrook subdivision from, meets all applicable, uh, approval criteria and, uh, commission therefore recommends approval of the application. Um, so along with the conditions of approval, the new conditions that were added that refer to the modifications, all the original conditions have been carried over from the original approval as well. And so some of the ones that have been carried over, pretty much standard, public improvements will be provided, water and utilities will be provided. Streets and sidewalks will be built to city standards, storm and wastewater will be managed. Construction impacts will be mitigated such as with the, you know, provision of an erosion control plan and the fire code will be met. And as for some new conditions, um, the improvements along Southeast Eagle Creek Road will be built to city standards instead of county standards. And that's because last year jurisdiction was transferred from the county over to the city. So those conditions have been updated. Um, stormwater tracks will be dedicated to the city. And resource protection tracks, so that's D and F, the, the original tract F along the eastern side. And the new wetlands tract will be owned and managed by the HOA and not by the city. Okay, so next steps, if there's any public comment, we can hear those. And then if council has any questions of me or of the applicant, um, we can ask those and then discuss. And then we'll be looking for a motion to approve, approve the changes or to deny with findings.
Okay, so I will read the rest of this before we get there. Um, is there any correspondence regarding the application?
Any correspondence, um, none. That is not already included in the planning commission recommendation, so it would be an exhibit. And I'm forgetting if there is one in there. Look. I don't, I mean, yeah, no, nothing recently.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Right, I will now read a statement about the evidence presented. Right, I will now read a statement about the evidence presented at the hearing, an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba. Must be raised prior to the close of the record of the final eventuary hearing on the. Specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba. And the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter. Or a failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue. Precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, would the applicant please come up? Oh, you're gonna do it? Okay, great. So we've got Tracy up on the screen.
Hello?
Hello, yeah, we get you.
Yeah, I'm Tracy Brown. I guess you can't see me. My camera didn't come on, but that's fine. So. Yeah, so again, I'm Tracy Brown and I'm his planning consultant and I've been hired by the applicant to assist them and. This modification process, I believe also in person, there's Ray Moore. I don't know if he came up the table or not. He's the engineer on the project. And he can answer any questions you might have regarding the engineering. So as Alan talked about, you know, the really the reason. We're bringing this back for a modification is because of the discovery of the wetland on the property. And with that, it required a modification to the street network and the lot layout. So it does result in a reduction of twenty six lots. So I guess, given that, you know, we we agree, the applicant agrees with all of the. Recommended conditions that both staff recommended and the planning commission went through. At the planning commission meeting, I can't recall that there was a lot of discussion about it. It seemed pretty straightforward. There might have been a question about tracked A. So track day is along Eagle Creek Road and that would be looked at as a future. Multifamily project site. So it's really not the subject of this application per se, except it would be a tract as part of the subdivision. So I guess with that, I guess the only. Thing that I might. Ask that you consider and you know, it's totally up to you. Is whether you would want to consider the applicant dedicating that tracked F to the city. And this is for a trail. That the the city is asked to be provided along that eastern property line. And I know staff has some. Correspondence, I think with public works, saying that they don't prefer. Maintaining those sorts of areas, but. So it's an offer. Something to consider, but other than that, we agree with all the staff recommended and planning commission recommended conditions. And we request that you approve this modification. So that concludes my presentation. I don't know if Ray Moore has anything else to add who's in person.
Okay, we'll find out here. Any of the councillors have questions to the modification of the charity?
I just have a question regarding the number of internal streets and the reducing reducing the number of that. Is that gonna impact traffic very much? Has that been looked at or?
There, I believe there were conversations with DLCD staff. Related to the the traffic study. And in this case, we have a sufficient net reduction in lots. That losing that. Losing that internal capacity isn't going to make a difference. In fact, we can't ask them for a new traffic study. And then is this well and because of a delineation from the Department of State Lands is that?
It it is from the consultant at this point. It hasn't been. I guess verified in in terms of the. There's a blanking on the terminology for that, but it is a consultant's determination or delineation. And I one of the condition is asking. Staff has referred it to Department of State Lands. For their review.
Yeah, thanks Tracy. For the record, Ray Moore, all county surveyors and planners, P O Box nine five five. So yeah, Tracy's correct. We hired a professional wetland consultant that did a delineation. And so what we did is just avoided it a hundred percent. So we didn't need to go get wetland fill permits or anything. We just completely tried to stay out of it.
Any other questions?
Might he touched on it, but all three of them, all three, because we're reducing it by about twenty percent the lots. But we're taking forty percent of the intersections going out on Deuce Road away and they they all. Proposed to pass. Yeah, and then I'm just curious, what 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 did they find that made them think to start looking at wetlands?
It ended up being a condition of approval from the first application. And so based on that condition, we had hire a professional consultant that went out and you know, they look at soils and plants and hydrology and and. It seemed marginal, but it was enough to meet the requirements.
So then, once that's confirmed by the state Department of State Lands, which usually takes a couple of months. Then we're we're then bound by that ourselves. It's like FEMA maps. So it's the map we have to use.
I don't see any other questions. We appreciate it. Thank you very much for giving us all the information and. Thank you, Alan, for putting this together up there.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. City Council, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I have no speaker request forms in front of me, so. I'm assuming there's nobody that wants to comment on this. And does staff have any? Anything to add? Before we move on.
I don't think I have anything to add.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the city council. Okay, after hearing all that. And I get a motion. I move to approve subdivision twenty twenty three dash zero six dash S Northbrook modification. Okay, let me get a second.
A second.
Yeah, first and second, I see. Let's do roll call on that one, please.
Aye.
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 Councillor Strobel?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Moving on, we have another is a public hearing for ordinance changes, is that right? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Okay, I will now close the public, the city council and open the public hearing. On. Your ordinance twenty twenty four zero zero one and ordinance recognizing the name and spelling of Jin Sing Drive. Do any of the members of council wish to claim just ex parte contact? No? Okay, the council will now hear the staff report on this proposal. Go ahead.
All right, this one's gonna be a little bit shorter. So, yeah, so this is an ordinance, file number ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero one, Jin Sing Drive, street name recognition. And the applicant is a city. And the proposal is to officially recognize the currently accepted spelling of Jin Sing Drive. Very exciting stuff. And I will explain why we're doing that. Okay, so last May, the county surveyor's office wrote to the city, originally wrote to Dawn Public Works and who. He then wrote me about it to just to bring attention to some discrepancies in the spelling of Jin Sing Drive on several county plats. So in the sixties and seventies, there's some that show Jen Singh Drive, that first spelling. And then there's one from nineteen sixty six showing Jin Singh Road. And then more recently from nineteen seventy seven on, they're generally Jim Singh Drive. And so the county has requested that the city clarify the correct name and spelling of this road. And given that Jin Singh Drive has been the most commonly accepted spelling. For several decades now, it's how it's shown on street signs and it's the name that the post. Post office uses. The planning commission and staff are recommending that the city council recognize and designate Jin Singh Drive. As shown right there is the proper name and spelling of the street. And so the reason this needs to go to planning commission council, it's. It's just how the statute of the ORS. Two two seven dot one twenty is written, planning commission must forward a recommendation to council to officially designate the name and spelling of the street. Council then designates the street name by ordinance in accordance with the recommendation or they can reject the recommend recommendation by resolution. However, if adopted, the ordinance would allow the county to legally correct the conflicting street names. On the plats that I just described and any other similar plats. So planning commission's recommendation is to adopt an ordinance recognizing the currently accepted spelling of Jin Singh Drive. It's pretty much as straightforward as that. So next steps, again, public comment if there is any council has any questions. Free to ask and then discussed, and then we will be looking for a motion to adopt. The ordinance adopted with changes or to reject planning commission's recommendation by resolution. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Alan. Are there any questions for Alan before we move on? Okay. I'm gonna read the rest of this. I know it seems a little monotonous, but have to do it. Is there any correspondence regarding the application?
None that I know of.
Okay, great. Now I will read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing, an issue which may be the basis for appeal to Luba. Must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity. To respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person by letter or failure to provide sufficient. Specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, does any member of the audience wish to speak on this? I don't have any request forms. Does the staff have anything to add? No, okay. At this time, I will now close the public hearing. And I will open up the city council and can I get a motion on the floor?
I move to adopt an ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero one, recognizing the current longstanding and. Generally accepted spelling of Jin Singh Drive.
We got a first and second. Let's do a roll call on that one as well.
Yes.
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 Yes. Councillor Strobel?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much for that. And thank you all for letting me get through that. We are now at council business. And what we have on council business tonight is a stipend discussion. Now I put this on there and I put this on there for a reason. It's come before me over the last sixteen years. Twice while I was a councillor and once as a mayor, me putting it forward, of course, times have changed. From the original time that stipend was brought to the floor, back when I first ran as a councillor, my thing was. The minute you start taking money, you become special interest, right? So you stop thinking about the people and you start thinking about yourself. But stipends I've learned are not like that. Stipends are given by the citizens of Estacada. They're allowed. They that's why they vote on it to give you. The elected officials, something to say, hey, we understand that you have to do this, this and this. We appreciate that you do. Lot of cities have stipends in place. So I thought it was time, as our city's growing the way it is, and the time that you all spend here on a regular basis and the meetings you go to. And what you do, that it was time to have this discussion. So I've brought it to you on that basis. Now I've talked with Melanie about this. They don't really have a view on this because it's the elected officials yourselves. That we're talking about here and the citizens of Estacada, whether they feel confident that this is something they want to do. That's why it goes to a vote. So. You know, now's the time for a discussion on that. So does anybody want to talk about this? I mean, do you? How do you feel about this? Am I?
Well, so I I do believe that we do a lot more work than there used to be. And I I really like the fact that we could try to. Leave some barriers to running for office for people. But I feel like it's a bad look right now. Everybody's paying more for utilities and I'm just, I just think it looks really bad in an election year.
Anybody else, Jerry?
Yeah, I'm I'm kind of in the same boat. I didn't, you know, I I never had had any. You know, visions of ever getting paid to do this. I did I did do this on a, you know, as a volunteer. I don't, I mean, we're already asking, we're already asking for, you know, the city's asking for money for wastewater treatment plant. The schools, the schools asking for money for their school bond. You know, I know it's 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 a small amount compared to those two projects, but I just don't see, you know. I I I just don't feel the need that we would need a stipend for, you know, to do this. Personally.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I with my chat with Melanie, we went back and forth. And again, I mean, I'm not here to. Make money or get money from the citizens. However, I did kind of like, I liked the Sandy model. I liked that they had a little bit of. A tiny bit of an incentive and being that we all use internet and we need internet. To do council business, I do like that Sandy does have. The the option to have your internet. Paid for. So that's something and that's not gonna come out of the taxpayers pockets. That's something we could work out with reliance or. And I think when Melanie and I were talking about that, that's a reimbursement, correct, is how they work it. Right, yeah. So you pay it and then you you get a reimbursement. So. That's something I would be comfortable with. I don't necessarily need any. Dollar amounts, but I do I do like a little bit of incentive or, you know, something like internet. I know they also offer a gym member. Sandy does gym membership as well, so but the internet thing is. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
I would be open to it if it was presented by the community. I feel awkward voting. I know it's not till the next council member, like if I ran again, but I I feel awkward. Voting for a stipend for myself if it was something that was being pushed by the citizens and they voted that they wanted that and it was on the ballot. Then I'd I'd listen to whatever they come up with on that. I would like a name badge, though, and maybe some business cards, you know?
Though, right? It goes to the ballot.
I think it'd probably be beneficial just to discuss what a process would be so that you guys understand. So, and this isn't, this isn't a conversation that's happening that's unique to Estacada. This is coming up in just about every jurisdiction and it's based on the amount of time that people are spending compared to. Traditionally, how much time people are spending. So you got your Estacada has a charter like a lot of cities. That specifies that. That the councillors can't receive remuneration for. Services can receive expense reimbursement. So. That's something that can happen now. What I've seen in other jurisdictions is just the amount of time that it takes for staff to process. Expense reimbursements and people keeping track of something like mileage or what have you. And the verification that needs to happen. And I don't know if this is true in Estacada or not, but in other jurisdictions I've represented, it's been a lot of time. Or more time than maybe could be spent. And so the theory is if people just. Receive a stipend monthly that is kind of. Similar to what their eligible reimbursements would be. Then instead of people keeping receipts or logging mileage or whatever. They just get a check at the beginning of the month. The problem with that is that it requires a charter amendment, so that would be voted on by the voters of Estacada. It couldn't happen otherwise. Practically speaking, the people that are. Not up for reelection would want to recuse themselves from the conversation. The people that are members of. That are serving an extra two years would declare a potential conflict of interest. Because if voters approved a stipend, then they would receive. Remuneration and it would prevent us from having to say, okay, well, what is the expense reimbursement looks like versus. Versus just a a monthly stipend. So that's legally speaking, practically speaking, what what would need to occur. The other thing I can tell you is that. This is something that enough jurisdictions are looking at that it's possible there's going to be legislation next session. That would set like a. Kind of set like a standard stipend and then create something similar to like. And then create something similar to like what counties do for. In some jurisdictions such as the city counselors, it's, it's other commissions that might receive the stipend. Um, but that would, it would be kind of a study of, okay, what would a reasonable basis be? So if you've seen, uh, cities that have stipends, then they can vary broadly, uh, what that amount would be. That's generally the process they went down. An independent board was, um. Was appointed to make a recommendation to a council to put something on a ballot. Um, and then that would need to be ratified by the voters. So there's, there. In any way, in any way this happened, or this could happen, it would, it would always require voter approval. Um, as long as it was on a November election in even year, because that is a general election, it would be no. Additional expense to the city to, to put it on. We would need to declare those potential conflicts of interest and all that. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting the wisdom of doing a stipend or not and just kind of. Helping people understand what that, that legal process would be. And again, um, I haven't looked at your specific numbers. And some jurisdictions where we looked at, it was kind of like. Kind of like the conversation we had a, a month ago about the, the sign permits for temporary political signs where it's like. The amount of work that staff had to do to get to an outcome, you know, far exceeded. A much simpler approach. So in other jurisdictions that have looked at this and, and, um, considered putting it on, that was a. That was something that I looked at is what's the current system like? How much time does it take? How much paperwork are we requiring people to turn in? Uh, how much X written narrative? And that can vary from city to city. Um, versus just like kind of a standard monthly amount that everyone knows that's gonna come in and, and. That's kind of how it's gone, um, or how other jurisdictions have looked at it. And I'm not aware of any jurisdictions where it's been a citizen initiative. That would be another way to do it is if somebody, if citizens that were appreciative of. You the council and recognize you're taking time away from your families and, and. You know, there are costs that go, whether it's driving to a county meeting or what have you. So that's another thing is that people would say, all right, we're gonna do this on a repeal that. On an initiative basis and put in a, um. A amount of X and then that would, that would negate the, um. That would mean that it just goes on, um, if they collected the signature. So it wouldn't be something you would have to refer. But there's no way it doesn't involve a public vote.
All right. Any other comments?
Go ahead, Paul.
Check here, um, I, I, I share a lot of the same feelings here, like, uh, what Council Pro Cop was saying. It's. An awkward time with all that's going on, uh, to be coming to the citizens. To be asking for this, but I can also see a benefit for future councils as well too. Um, but the, the process. Touching on what Peter was saying, the process would be, uh, we wouldn't be recommending that we get one. We would be recommending that piece that he touched on, that this would go to an independent board. Is that right? Or an independent group? To evaluate to see if this is something that we should do, then they come back to us. And then we decide if it should go based on their recommendation, if it should go to the voters. Is, is that right?
Yeah, you could, you could do it that way. I mean. You're gonna have to repeal that charter provision with the prohibition language in any. Regardless of how, whether it's an independent board or what have you, that would need to be repealed. The independent board is just something that I've heard about as future legislation. And it's something that the League of Oregon Cities is trying to clarify. So that cities can better have these conversations without all the disclosures that, all the conflict disclosures and all that.
I, I was under the impression that that independent board, quote unquote, for us to be a charter review committee, because we would have to, um. Assemble a charter review committee to review the charter and then they would determine, make a recommendation to the council on what they. Felt about that, is that?
Yeah, that, that could absolutely be.
Right.
Getting back to the reimbursement side of things or whatnot, is there any other way that there's? Like the, the gym membership and the, like Sandy, Sandy's mall or whatnot, I actually agree with. Counselor Hughes. I think it would be cool to see something, it encourages the council to also be out in town and stuff like that, removes excuses and then. Helps us to just to continue to be a higher standard of excellence amongst our community as well. So I'm all for helping. Whether it's a gym membership or some, something that's local that puts us. In more places like that. I understand like when I'm in the gym, it's my time. But I do like being there to be a representative of this community in a leadership position in that format as well. So. I think that, I mean, I'm paying for it regardless right now, but I see several other members of not only the council, but the staff that go up. Think that's a pretty common practice, even amongst private companies to offer something along those lines. So I'd like to see that. Especially if it's even that little one percent that encourages more of the demographic to come out and run to fill these. Positions or get involved, so.
Conversation here. It sounds like we're all over it.
I know, huh? Oh, go ahead.
How much time is the staff spending on reimbursements?
Not right now. I don't believe there's, there's not, not much, because it would be a mileage reimbursement if you drove to a city's dinner or meeting. Which I don't actually think anybody's really been turning those in. Um. So we haven't, but I do, I didn't think about that, that if there's like every month, there's. Uh, reimbursement requests being submitted from each counselor that would add more staff time, but I don't know. So it wouldn't be too burdensome, but I guess are you leaning more towards looking at expanding the reimbursement policy or? And, and would, that's a question, I guess, maybe for Peter. Like if we're reimbursing something. That's like a gym membership that's not directly related, would that still count for reimbursement?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's more challenging. I think a, a technology reimbursement, whether that was. Cause you guys are all using, you know, you guys are basically doing city business. You're, you're reviewing packets on your internet, you know, um. Cell phone is something we can look at. Those are areas where there is a direct tie between. The work we're asking you to do as a, um. As city counselors and the expenses that you're having to incur to do those. And. I suspected you guys weren't turning in mileage reimbursements, um, and that sort of thing, just because. I mean, I didn't wanna. I didn't want to presume that you weren't, but. That's part of the thing is that you oftentimes, city counselors are out of pocket for a bunch of expenses that. They could, they probably should be reimbursed for. I mean, if you're going down to Salem to get two million dollars from the legislature. Like you guys should be getting your mileage. Um, and people some, are sometimes reluctant to turn it in. And that's kind of the, I don't know why that is. I'm, I'm the same way though, so, um. But yeah, I mean, that's, that's the other benefit of kind of a stipend is that instead of having to keep track and wondering. Okay, this constituent, I met this constituent for coffee. We were talking about city business. Should I turn this in or not? Cause my guess is you guys were erring on the side of saying no. And so that's money coming out of your pocket. But all that sort of stuff is. If there's a strong nexus between your workers at the council and the expenses that you're incurring. That's something that, and we, I want to look at your reimbursement language, but that's something that could be dealt with. And probably should be frankly.
Good, Mike.
Hmm, I'm strongly in favor of the reimbursement side of things. If you're spending money to do city business, um, whether that's mileage. I think that if we're invited to and encouraged to go to some of the Clackamas County dinners and stuff like that, uh. Paying for your plus one is kind of a silly thing, you know, because you want to be there with your family and, and go there with that. Um. And if someone at the mayor's traveling down to Salem and gets a hotel to be going and speaking at one of these meetings, I think that that should be reimbursable. Um, I'm all on board if we're paying. I just feel uncomfortable on the stipend part.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see the community bring it to us personally. Um, I mean, that's the best. Feedback that you could get is if they came to us saying. You know, hey, we'd like to see you guys paid for what you're doing and your time. That would be. Sign that we're really moving in the direction that they would want. So. I'd like to see it being the community's hands on that, but I'm, I stand with you in the reimbursement side. I'd like to see that increase.
Yeah. I think it's, uh, well, from what I'm hearing, I mean, we're kind of all over here, but the reimbursement is the, the area where I think. Is the strongest here, not so much the stipend.
Uh, yeah, why don't we work on that to start with? And then any, um, community members out there listening or reviewing this meeting later, if. They're hearing, um, hearing this conversation and, you know, agree that. That the, that they would like to see, um, a stipend for people serving on council, then they could, you know, make it known. Um, that way you wouldn't be, um. In that conflict of you don't want to ask for it. And you might not, you know, some of you, you might be. You need to think about like, okay, four or five years from now, who's going to be on the council? Would this be helpful to them too? So it's not just for yourselves, but, um, you know, maybe there's a. Um, an article that might show up in the paper or people will watch the video. And if, um, if they feel, then they can bring it back. But we could definitely work on clarifying and potentially expanding the, um.
Reimbursement.
The reimbursement, at least educated. I don't think, I don't think I've educated you on that. Like if you're going someplace on council business. Um, you should turn in your mileage and, um. I, I just haven't, I haven't educated you on those procedures. So, uh, let's look at that first and then see if we get any feedback from the community and. Um, take it from there.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
Paul, anything else you want to add to that? Are you, you good?
I'm good. I'm in agreement.
All right, great. We will move forward. Um, next thing I have on the, uh, list is the citizen and committee group comment. Oh, that's right. We added something.
Yeah.
Yeah, the resolution twenty twenty four zero zero two resolution setting fees for the waste, uh, Wade Creek Park Community Room.
Okay, thank you for pulling this out as I was speaking with, um, a few of you on Friday. And Saturday, um, and we were looking through the packet, reading through the resolution. It was called out that. Um, I was, it was not exactly specifically clear. So, uh, basically we've developed it, this resolution that sets rates or. That were recommended by the council, uh, back in March. Uh, I think it was March that we were discussing this. Um, and so we put together the resolution based on your recommendation, although. I had forgot to bring up businesses at the time that we were discussing it. And occasionally. There's a business or two in town that would like to use. Sometimes they use this room. Sometimes they would like to use the Wade Creek room. And so I added that into. Um, the level of fee, uh, that would be the same as residents living outside city limits. But when, when we read it in the resolution, it was slightly confusing. So what I'd like to do. And I'll have to, do I need to read the whole resolution? Okay, just the, okay, so, uh, in the resolution, which is on page seventeen. Of the packet, um, under the rental fees portion, what I'd like to amend that to is to say twenty five dollars for the first two hours for businesses. If they're renting the Wade Creek Community Room. Twenty five dollars for the first two hours for residents outside city limits. And ten dollars for the first two hours for nonprofits. And then fifteen dollars for each additional hour for businesses, residents outside city limits and nonprofits. So if they're having an extended. Event there, it, then it goes on to charge by the hour and there'd be no charge for residents within Estacada city limits. And I think that's clearer, yes.
Just to clarify, is it, it's all businesses?
Yes.
So if you're gonna make the amendment, I would just clarify on there, twenty five dollars for the first two hours for all businesses, because it reads. Businesses and residents outside city limits.
Yeah, can I show you? Like we pulled it, we pulled it into a separate line. Would that be? Like, putting a, right, making it three lines. So twenty five dollars first two hours for businesses. Twenty five dollars for the first two hours for residents outside city limits, ten dollars for the first two hours for nonprofits. That way they each have their own. Yeah, fine, okay.
Damn, we're all in agreement on this?
Yep.
Hey, can I get a motion on the floor so we can get this done?
Move to approve the amendment.
Okay.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now we're at the citizen and community group comment, second time around. I have one coming up. All right. Uh, Vincent. But you get creative with that signature there.
I, you know, I was happy to sign it. I was like, oh, it's probably right normals. Uh, I just wanted to touch on the conversation you were just having about the stipend verse expenses as a personal. Citizen, you know, the only reason I like the expense version better is because you get more visibility into. Like what people are actually spending, because we could ask like, oh, what is Heidi spend? What did Heidi spend this month? What did Michael spend? You know, you can dig into it and there are. I do a lot of it for work. There are a lot of programs nowadays where you can, you know, take a picture of your receipt, submit it online. And it's all automated and it's pretty fast. So just as like a personal, I think the exp- I, I do like, you know, you guys. You, anyone who donates their time to the city, you know, time, resources, it, it takes money, it takes time. You know, I'm not opposed to like getting reimbursements or anything, but I do like the version of having the expenses just so if. Someone wanted to be like, what are they spending? Uh, having the receipts and all that stuff, I think is a little bit better for the city.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I have no more forums in front of me, so. Um, we are now at, uh, mayor and council reports and comments, so I will start off with you, Mike.
Uh, thank everybody for coming tonight. I wanted to spend some time on Saturday with the, uh. The school bond handing out some of the information for that, for people to know more about the school bond. And then when I came home, um, we had a, a, another flyer with a different view on it. I would just encourage anyone that's getting both of those flyers to validate the information on them. Um, the one that I got at my door said that they were spending a hundred and twenty nine million dollars on a new elementary school. I don't think it, uh, a lot of the other information seemed pretty accurate, but, uh. Just make sure that any information you're reading about the bond that you're using to make a decision about the bond is accurate information. So I'd encourage whichever way you're gonna vote.
Okay, great.
Uh, thank you, everybody. Um, so April thirtieth is the last day to register to vote. I know it's a primary, so people aren't as engaged, but this is really important with the school bond and, uh, sheriff. And, um, county commissioners, so please get involved.
Okay, Jerry?
Uh, yeah, thanks for that. Heidi, I just, yeah, really too. I want to echo that, encourage people to get out there and vote, um, very important. I just thank everybody for coming tonight and thank all my fellow counselors and mayor and city staff and. Uh, wish we could have more meetings like this, ran nice and smoothly. Appreciate it and appreciate all the hard work everyone does.
Uh, yeah, just thank you for those that come and they're consistently showing up. And, uh, for those that are gonna watch this later or watching online. Uh, please give us your feedback. We want to hear from you. Send in comments, concerns, what's important to you for us to address and fix and what's going on in the community. You're our eyes and our ears and. We want to serve you. We need to hear from you as well. So the more the merrier.
Hey, Jerry?
Uh, I'm gonna start off by thanking staff. You guys do an amazing job. Um, and I want to, uh, give a little shout out to Taylor. Um, I want to personally thank Taylor for all the hard work that she's put in, um, and, uh, she will be missed. Uh, but I know that, um, that department is in good hands and, uh, um. Hopefully moving forward, we just, there's no, no hiccups. We just roll right along, but, uh, thank you, Taylor. Um, you, you did a lot for this town in the time you were here, so thank you. Um, and again, thanks everybody for showing up. Appreciate it. Thanks for everybody that's gonna be watching and thank you guys for all the hard work that you, uh, the hours you put in. So thank you.
Hey, Paul.
Um, just want to thank everyone else, uh, all the counselors for great discussion tonight. Staff for prepping us. And really appreciate that, uh, we can accommodate folks like myself who are out of town and then Alan who had to run out of town too. To be able to participate via Zoom. Uh, I really appreciate that. And I think, uh, Counselor McRoy, do you have more to share there?
What's that?
Yeah, he's.
Do you have more to share there? If so, I rescind my time to counsel.
Jerry hit it on the head. I just wanted to, I totally spaced. I didn't get a chance to stop by to, um, say goodbye to Taylor. And I just wanted to let her know how much she was appreciated, had a lot of opportunities to work with her, both on the council and, um, in the planning department. And I don't, those are big shoes to fill. Good luck toward her new opportunity that she's going to, but. Um, just wanted to recognize all the work she did and anytime that I called for anything, I mean, ninety nine percent of the time she just. Cited the code and then when she didn't have it off the top of her head, she got it back to me really quickly. And, uh, it's gonna be a big loss for the city.
Thank you. I'm just gonna. Thank you, I'm just gonna receive my time, uh, and we'll continue the meeting after the fact. So I will close this, well, actually, I'm not gonna close it, cause I'm gonna leave it open for the executive.
All right, well, we'll get ready to go to executive session and because Paul is not present with us. What the plan to do tonight is we'll ask folks to um, leave the room for the executive session and then also leave the Zoom meeting. Uh, because we don't have any other business to do after the um, executive session, so we'll just um. Leave Paul on Zoom to talk with us. Everybody else will need, except for press. Uh, if there's official press here.
I can read this.
You can read that, yeah. And then we'll, um, after, when, when we come back out, we'll start the recording again, so anybody who's, who was online. Um, but had to get off would be able to, first thing in the morning, we'll get that posted and they could see how, you know, that we close out the meeting and that everything is.
Okay, great. I will close the city council meeting and open the litigation part of this. Um, I will now read from this. The Estacada City Council will now meet in executive session. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S one nine two dash six six zero. Which allows the council to meet in executive session to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current. Litigation, litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report. Any other deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session or previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session at the end of the executive session. We will return to the city council and I will close it for the final. So, that's it.
Okay, so we'll take a brief minute here to let's um, say thank you for joining us and. Those who might be on Zoom to exit the meeting and. Thank you. Teresa is, yes. Yes, once we get, once we um, get started again, if Teresa is on here with us to give me to state your name.
Okay.
And just in case we needed it, um, I wanted to hand out the.
It's after this twice already this week, I'm ready to just.
Like, I wanted to read it, and then I thought I should have it here just in case we want to read this.
Yeah.
Okay, Teresa, could you state your name and affiliation and then we'll pause the recording? Oh, I guess we have to, is she admitted? Hold on, we're gonna admit you.
Okay, Teresa Carson, Estacada News.
Thank you.
All right, I'm closing the executive session, going back into city council, and we are adjourning the meeting.